Okay, I'd like to call this meeting into order. I'd like to welcome you to the regular meeting of council Monday, December 16th, 2019, our last meeting of the year. Does anyone have any announcements around the table? And at this time, we'll move down to approval of the agenda. This is Councilor Peterson.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the agenda for Monday, December 16th, 2019, regular meeting of council.
Seconder for that, Councilor Philip Chuck. Any further discussion? All in favor? Good, thank you. Moving down to minutes. Do we have a motion? Councilor Philip Chuck?
I'd like to make the motion that the minutes from the November 25th, 2019, regular meeting of council be adopted as read.
And a seconder for that? Councilor Beck? Any questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, we're moving into a public hearing. It was declared by Mayor Spence at 6:31 PM to hear comments on the proposed bylaw 2019-18, a bylaw to amend by law 2018-06, known as the zoning bylaw. Bylaw 2019-18, a bylaw to amend by law 2018-06, known as the zoning bylaw. This amendment will rezone the property at 106 Canora Street from R2 to R2T. This would change the allowed frontage minimum of the lots from 12 meters minimum to 10.36 meter minimum, allowing for the subdivision of the lots to add an additional single-family dwelling. There was no comments received prior to this hearing. And is there any comments now? If not, we will close the public hearing and move down to administration report, starting with planner.
Thank you, Mayor Spence, members of council. Two items for discussion tonight. The first is related to the public hearing, bylaw 2019-18, to rezone 106 Canora Street from R2 to R2T. An application has been received to subdivide 106 Canora Street East. The owner would like to construct a second single-family dwelling on the property directly to the west of the current house. The current frontage of the property is 22.86 meters or 75 feet. The owner would like to subdivide the property into two 11.43 meters or 37.5 foot lots. Under current R2 zoning, the minimum frontage on single detached dwellings is 12 meters or 39 feet. Planning and development does not see any issues from spots on this property. It does not significantly change any of the regulations or uses allowed, with the exception of the frontage. It would redevelop an unsiteable property and create a new dwelling where one does currently not exist. In addition, the list of both permitted and discretionary use is allowed under an R2 zone is less. For example, they could not apply for a secondary suite on this property if rezoned to R2T. I've included a plan of the proposed subdivision as appendix A, a copy of the bylaw as appendix B, a copy of the circulation letter was sent to all residents living within the block as appendix C, and a copy of both the R2 and R2T zoning to compare. We advertised bylaw 2019-18 for two weeks in the local paper, in addition to the letter that was sent to the neighborhood, and no concerns or comments were raised. So the recommendation tonight is that council follow through with second and third reading.
Okay, so we'll start with second reading. Motion, please. Councilor Beck? Seconder, Councilor Philip Chuck?
Yeah, so the motion here that I'd like to make is that bylaw 2019-18 be read a second time.
Okay, and we have a seconder for that, Councilor Philip Chuck. Is there any discussion here? Hearing none?
You know, this year, I'm very happy about, you know, so like the work here that, you know, that planning did in terms of making sure that, you know, that the block was notified out there, these are our community, we certainly had a chance to, you know, to provide feedback. So thank you very much for, you know, for the work there that was done on that.
Okay, all in favor of second reading? Motion to have third and final reading. Councilor Schramm?
I'd like to make a motion for bylaw 2019-18, a bylaw to amend by law 2018-06, known as the zoning bylaw. This amendment will rezone the property at 106 Canora Street from R2 to R2T. Be read a third time and passed, and that bylaw 2019-18 now be adopted. I so move.
To a seconder for that, Councilor Peterson. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of third reading? Okay, thank you.
The second item for discussion tonight is related to some agreements with off-site development fees. The downturn in the economy and the slowdown in building has resulted in subdivisions which were expected to be built out by now taking much longer to complete. This is leaving some service agreements with over half the total amount of levies owing closing close to the date which the developers require to pay them in full. Off-site levies are collected during development to pay for increased capacity to infrastructure necessary to support increased development. KH Developments has requested the city expand the following service agreements from their current drop dead date to December 1st, 2025. That's West Centennial, the three lots, the Southland Stage 5, Tradition Stage 1A, Southlands Industrial Stage 1, and Legend Stage 7. This item was discussed at committee of the whole, and it was agreed upon that we would extend it, or we would look at extending the dates to December 31st, 2023, as a compromise before the next election. And so, in addition to that, we've been requested by a separate developer, 101-159250 Saskatchewan Limited, who has plans to develop a number of residential condo apartment buildings off the west end of Central Street on Loan Court, has requested that we look at canceling their development and servicing agreement altogether and come back to the drawing board with some new proposals. This would benefit the city as we would be negotiating rates on that property under the new formula, which would significantly increase the potential levies that could be collected by the city. So there's two recommendations tonight related to these agreements, and the first is related to KH, and the second is related to Saskatchewan 101-159250.
Okay, we'll start with the first motion. Councilor Schramm?
I'd like to make a motion to extend the drop dead dates for the following agreements to December 31st, 2023. Legend Stage 7, Southlands Industrial Stage 1, Tradition Stage 1A, Southline Stage 5, and West Centennial.
Do we have a seconder for that? Councilor Beck? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Any other items?
A second recommendation is that we look at canceling the development and service agreement with 101-159250 Saskatchewan Limited.
Do we have a motion? Councilor Peterson?
I'd like to make the motion to cancel the development and services agreement with 101-159250 Saskatchewan Limited, dated June 26, 2015.
Okay, seconder. Councilor Tewin? Councilor Tewin? Any further questions there? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
Thank you, worship. My report is on Township Road 384 contribution agreement. In mid to late 2015, the RM Acorn Park started discussions with the city of Warman and Martinsville regarding upgrades to Township Road 384. In November 2018, we received a letter from the RM Acorn Park requesting that the city of Warman place in its 2019 budget, the amount of $816,000, $67,000, sorry, as a commitment to pay for one-third the cost of paving. During early 2019, there was discussion regarding the paving of 384, including the need for the upgrades, approximate costs, future transportation corridors, and regional business hub as well. The RM and the city embarked on performing traffic counts on the road, including percentage of vehicles passing by Warman versus turning into. The research found that only about 25% of the vehicles were turning into or out of Warman versus going by. So on December 2nd, city administration received a copy of a draft agreement from the RM Acorn Park setting out the cost sharing agreement with a cost sharing for Township 384 at a contribution percentage of 25%, estimated at $683,750, to be paid in seven equal annual installments, and that agreement is attached for council's information. There is a recommendation that the city enter into, approve entering into a cost sharing agreement with the RM of Acorn Park for Township Road 384.
Do we have a motion for that? Councilor Philip Chuck?
I'll make the motion to approve entering into a cost sharing agreement with the RM of Acorn Park regarding the upgrades to Township Road 384, and further that Mayor Spence and city clerk to be authorized to sign the agreement as presented.
Do we have a seconder for that? Councilor Jones? Any further discussion? Councilor Beck?
Yeah, you know, certainly in review of this document this year, one of the things that certainly struck me on this is that, you know, certainly the $683,000 was first proposed as being the maximum for this, you know, for this project, you know, in that kind of thing. You know, certainly with this here, the way that the, that disagreement is actually written up, we don't have any say in the development of the roadway in that whatever, but we would be on the hook for the, for the financial shortfalls, you know, in that kind of thing, or let's say overages at the end of that. It does give us, you know, 30 days from, you know, from the end, you know, where Acorn Park could, you know, certainly let us know what those maximums are, or let's say what those overages are. You know, but I don't think that that's, you know, terribly friendly in the agreement, if I can put it that way. So I'd like, you know, I'd like to know if there's any way that we could, you know, set the $683,000 as its maximum, you know, in that kind of thing. And if there was anything over and above that, I think that that should be a separate agreement, or something to that effect. So I certainly have concerns on that issue.
Anything else?
I agree with Councilor Beck. I was under the impression that what we were offering was that amount, not that amount plus if they go over.
I also had down, I mentioned, should the number be a part of the agreement? And I guess that's, and I guess I was looking for that. So if you have any discussions or anything else with that.
I guess if I was going to make a recommendation, certainly you want, if it's less, we certainly want to take advantage of that as well. So in regards to Councilor Peterson, to put an amount in, I wouldn't suggest that we just put that amount in, but you may want to say to a maximum of that amount. So we can certainly go back to the, to the RM and indicate that in 2B, or sorry, 3A, is it 3A? After the Acorn Park Road, so Warman will contribute an amount equal to 25% of the project costs related to Acorn Park Road to a maximum of $683,750.
Yeah, you know, certainly with this here, that's amendment that I'd like to, you know, to propose, you know, to the recommendation.
Okay, and so do you?
I'll second that.
Okay, and everybody's in favor of that? Okay, so for point of order, is, are we able to do it that way?
Yeah, so now you just vote on the amendment, and then the original.
Okay, so we'll vote on the amendment, all in favor? Any more further?
No, yeah.
Further discussion about the motion itself? Now that it's amended? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. I'm Ms. Manager. How are you feeling?
Finally better. Took a long time. Good evening, Mayor and council. The first item I have for you this evening is the 2020 operating and capital budgets. As presented to mayor and council at the city of Warman's special budget meeting, please find attached a copy of the 2020 operating and capital budgets. The 2020 city of Warman budgets include an average municipal tax increase of 2.9%. Administration notes that the property tax bylaw will come forward once administration receives final assessment figures from SAMET in the new year, along with confirmation of the 2020 education meal rate. The recommendation is that the 2020 budget, consisting of just over $22 million in operating revenue, $17 million of operating expenses, almost $19 million of capital expenditures, $3.128 million in transfers allocated reserves, and $3.112 million in transfers from allocated reserves, be adopted by council effective January 1st, 2020, at this regular meeting of council.
Okay, so do I have a motion, please? Councilor Philip Chuck?
I'll make the motion that the 2020 budget, consisting of $22,38,43 in operating revenue, $17,389,910 of operating expenses, $18,965,671 of capital expenditures, $3,128,133 in transfers to allocated reserves, and $3,112,416 in transfers from the allocated reserves, be adopted effective January 1st, 2020.
Do we have a seconder for that? Councilor Schramm? Further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Ms. David?
The second item I have is with regards to tax enforcement. Listed in appendix D are properties for which council had previously provided a resolution authorizing the treasurer to proceed with acquiring title. This previously provided resolution authorized administration to serve the six-month notice. At this time, administration is requesting a resolution from council to proceed to submit request for consent, Form B, to the, or Form 5, to the provincial mediation board for the listed properties with arrears balances six months after having served Form C.
Okay, do we have a motion there? Councilor Peterson?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the city treasurer to proceed to acquire title on most properties listed in appendix D.
Do we have a seconder? Councilor Jones? Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
At this time, I would like to declare that I have a conflict of interest due to the fact that my, that the company that I am a part of put in a bid for the Sixth Avenue Sign Corridor.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. In front of you, you have my report on the Sixth Avenue Sign Corridor RFP, along with the matrix, whoops, that was created to help provide some objective criteria for determining the best submission to administer the Sixth Avenue Sign Corridor. Information sets for the matrix were taken from the RFP, as well as any follow-up info that was provided from the three shortlisted candidates. The sets of criteria include total revenue to the city, average cost to the advertisers or clients, proposed upgrades to sign material, proposed upgrade to sign post material, company experience, and company location. In front of you, you have my recommendation.
Okay, Councilor Schramm?
I'd like to move that the contract to administer and manage the Sixth Avenue Sign Corridor for a five-year period to the print connection. I so move.
Do we have a seconder for that? Councilor Tewin? And we'll open the floor for discussion. Councilor Philip Chuck?
Thank you, first of all, for the chart. Very clear, very well laid out, you know, color-coded, a little bit of everything. So it really did make it easy, and you have comparables across the board. I do like, you know, I do see the difference in the value as far as the total five-year revenue, and that does influence me too. But, you know, it'd be nice if it was local, and we have two people that are fairly local, but it's fairly substantial, the difference. So I guess, is there any difference in quality of signs that you saw through any of this? Any research that you've got or information you've received?
Yeah, I mean, based on what was submitted, all three, the ACP is what it stands for, and AluPenel is very similar. So it's all very high-quality material. It's going to be, from my understanding, vinyl that's affixed to the ACP, to all of them, right? And so it has, each one has a little bit of a different warranty, but it's all higher quality than what we're experiencing in the current sign corridor, what we had up to date.
Councilor Jones?
Yeah, so I too would like to thank you for putting that together. That helped things a lot, and just let know each company stacks for each other. You know, how the points are assigned and everything like that, you know, I think could be, could be subjective, but I love the fact that it was all laid out like that. Personally, you know, I do lean more towards someone that's local. I think, given the position we play, and how much we promote trying to grow business within our community, to me, I really do lean towards something like this when I look at the quality and the risk of the product. You know, I think that all these companies are going to give us a product that someone driving by on the highway is going to be, or sorry, on that Sixth Avenue is going to be good with. And, you know, where I lean is, you know, our, you know, I just think we have a role to play in helping grow some local businesses in that regard, which would certainly be to see it go to someone that's local.
Any other comments? Councilor Schramm?
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Go ahead, Councilor Schramm.
I, you know, I echo the same thoughts, but on the same talk, the money that is the cost, the revenue, could be in fact turned around and invested into local business. And we talked about that type of thing, and I think it's imperative that maybe we should soon draft something up that could allocate this kind of funds to help some of the things that we've talked about, helping the local business. That way, it's rejuvenating and helping our businesses here, and I think that's important as well.
Councilor Beck?
Yeah, you know, this year, I would certainly like to, you know, thank each of the three companies that have certainly provided their submissions. You know, certainly with this here, we do have, you know, certainly like a deteriorating sign corridor right now, and I have no doubt that, you know, that all these companies here are going to make a substantial difference out there. So I'm definitely looking forward to the changes that, better you be coming our way.
Councilor Tewin?
I just want to just echo the thank yous. I think it's, the chart's really well done, and the information provided, it does make it easier to sort of evaluate what's before us. So, very much.
I just have one quick question. Do you know what the revenue was? So it's about $3,000 a year, what it was previously that we were getting?
It's 5% for every leased sign, so 5% of the total gross revenue per sign that was ranked it out, which is, so there's 18 signs that have vinyl on them right now, and so it'd be 5% of the gross revenue from those. So I believe it was just under $1,000. Okay. Yes. Okay.
Okay, my comments would be, I really, I said in committee of the whole, I know that there is some, there's some finance here that we are looking at that would go towards the city, but I still think supporting local is so important. We're leaders in the community, and we need to lead by example, and to go out of our community when we have companies in our community that can do the work, I'm just so opposed to it. So that's, that's my comment.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. I guess we'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, so, Carrie, does anyone have a second motion?
I didn't get that. It was five to two.
Uh, no, four to two. Does anyone have an alternate motion? Carrie?
I'd like to make the motion, the council worth contract to administer the Sixth Avenue Sign Corridor for five years to discovery advertising.
A seconder for that? Councilor Jones? Further discussion?
Certainly to this, you know, to the points that I made earlier, regardless of who actually wins the contract, you know, like I do see our businesses winning in terms of, like, you know, certainly with the improved sign corridor there, so I'm certainly in support of this.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, let's see, so, I guess a motion to, file administration reports.
Don't we still have the banners? Didn't the banners were separate, or they just were down?
Didn't you do the banners last time, didn't?
Or no? They're in the, they're in the report, but I'm...
No.
It was an old report.
Okay, so, a motion to file administration reports.
I'll make the motion that administration reports for Monday, December 16th, 2019, be accepted by council as presented and filed.
Seconder? Councilor Jones? All in favor? Thank you. Moving down to...
Someone should get a turn.
Oh, yes. Okay, before you is the mayor's report, and FCM report to council. Any, I'm just trying to see if there's anything to highlight, other than what's down there. Does anyone have any questions?
Just a quick one about the candy cane ball. That's completely city-run, like that's our, so what's been going on this time, it's all done through recreation. Okay.
Yeah, they've been doing it for a number of years already. It's a huge...
Yeah, like they renamed it three years ago, or whatnot, because it used to be like the Christmas, or, yeah, Sant Day or something like that, whatever, so it's just renamed. But, yeah, it's all by recreation.
Any other questions? Okay, moving down to our youth council report.
So, two weeks ago, we had our period one classes, write letters. They had the option of two places. One was to the Canadian Armed Forces, and the other was to a school in Moon Lake, and they were anonymous, and we sent them away. And then, we have also been collecting donations and fundraising for Camp Easter Seal, which is a camp just outside of Watchers. They're pretty much taking donations for anything. And then, the last one is at the senior A-girls basketball team. We'll be going to one of the senior homes instead of practicing this Thursday.
And I see you were right smack in the middle there. Does anyone have any questions of Chanel's report? Bring them, thank you. Okay, motion to file both the mayor's and the youth council report. Councilor Beck?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to file the mayor's report and the youth council representatives' report for Monday, December 16th, 2019, as presented.
Do we have a seconder for that? Councilor Tewin? Any further questions? All in favor? Okay, council roundtable, starting with Councilor Beck.
All right, so it's been sort of like a busy time between last meeting and this. I did attend the Saskatoon Freely, you know, so this year I did kind of stop off. I left a comment behind there for the, you know, for the proposed design. I did have a chance also to participate in the Saskatchewan Health Authority meeting that was held in Saskatoon, and at that meeting, we did have Rod from the Ministry of, you know, from the Ministry of Health there. Yeah, and with this here, he's actually looking at scheduling a meeting where he would actually present to council here sometime in the first couple of months of 2020. So with this here, it'd certainly be, you know, certainly be nice to see exactly what, you know, what's kind of transpired regarding like the ambulance transportation, because that was a major topic of discussion there. So I have no doubt that we are definitely on the province's radar for that. I also highlighted the same issue around the, around the SUMA board last Friday. So, yeah, so certainly with this here, regarding the ambulance transportation, you know, it certainly looks like there's a number of irons in the fire, so things are moving along well. Also had the opportunity to be at the seniors' dinner, and that's just a fantastic, you know, night to, you know, to take in some turkey dinner, but also to, you know, to, you know, to listen to what some of the seniors' concerns are out there, and, you know, just to certainly visit around this time of year. So it was just a fantastic night, and everybody's joyful, and the, you know, when they start singing, it just lifts up the whole entire place, and you certainly feel better at the end of the night, so that's great. Like to welcome Bio Foods to opening up here in Warman. It's definitely nice to, you know, to be at their grand opening. And also this year, there is the employee Christmas lunch, so later again, it's really nice to, you know, to certainly see all of our employees there, and, you know, wish them well here into the Christmas season, and into 2020. So on the SUMA board updates and whatever, this year, there was some information here that I did send off to, you know, to Dawn. We'll bring that forward to the, to the first meeting in January, in that kind of thing. So I'll kind of speak to the, to the SUMA updates there. So I'll leave it at that here for today.
Thank you. You got the chance.
So I have nothing to report since the last meeting. I do have flooding report meeting tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Just Councilor Tewin?
I've got nothing left to report this evening.
Councilor Peterson?
Well, we hit the senior supper and the staff Christmas, but also wanted to make note that we've gone out a couple of times to looking at Christmas lights around Warman, and it's really, it's really awesome to see just how many people take the time to decorate in Warman. It's a lot higher than when you're driving around Saskatoon looking for lights. You know, there's fewer and far... You know, there's fewer and far between there. But here it just seems like every street there's someone who's really puts out a top model shepherd.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Schramm?
I attended the Rock Regional Oversight Committee meeting on the 28th of November. And I too was at the senior supper and at the staff Christmas luncheon. I do want to take a moment now if I can, worship, to just talk about the food bank and give a report. What we've received up to, and this is just going to December 9th, going into the Christmas season tonight, the first responders are delivering about 39 hampers. Like I might, I gotta make sure I got, cause I don't want to say I'm, all the information I have here. So we have 39 hampers going out tonight. Firefighters are taking them out. In those, uh, there's a $75 gift card from Bylow for turkey, a large grocery bag of food for each member of household and gifts for each child too. It's up to $25 for each kid's gift. The hampers may be about a hundred dollars for a family of three, family of five, maybe $200. So, um, it's, there is a bigger family that we've also helped this year. The food bank only had to buy $2,700 with the gift cards and $600 with the kids' gifts. The rest has all been donated. In, uh, for this, for the year, now, a lot of the, the funds that we raise at this time go for the whole year. So in the breakdown for just this year, we have helped 41 families total for the food bank this year. Forty-eight point seven percent of the families use the food bank coming, uh, coming twice. Twenty-five percent of all the families that use, uh, are three times, 10% use four times. April is one of the highest, is the highest for first time requests of the year. March and July are the second highest first time requests. And then, and it goes from there. In what we've received for funds, uh, we received over $4,600 from churches, above $5,800 from businesses, over $2,000 from citizens. So our total, plus we have toys coming in from toy drives and some money from the schools, which I don't have presently. So our total up to December 9th was $12,552.47. In comparison to last year, which was $16,748.2. So those things have to, that money has to go throughout the whole year. And, um, you know, we are endeavoring to try to look after the needs of our community. And, um, so it's, it's an ongoing thing. This year we've really tried to make it more food rather than food carts. It's a little easier to get, when you're going for donations, it's easier for people to give food donations, real food than, than money. Although it's a little bit easier sometimes to give food carts than to where you store all of the food that is donated. So, uh, you know, we're endeavoring to try and to look after that. So for the most part, out of, uh, out of all of the, uh, sometimes in this particular, when we talk about the food bank, how many of those are citizens? How many of those are church people? Out of the people that have been helped, uh, this coming, this coming Christmas, only four out of the 39 have been church people. So it is not due to any special thing. We just are, are helping the community as, as, as a whole. And for the most part, I know for my own church, we look after our own. And so it doesn't take a, it's not a burden on the food bank. But it's, uh, it's encouraging for what has transpired this year, the, the helpfulness, the heart of the community and the support from businesses and so forth. So, um, it is a great time of the year to be thinking of others and to do things in the community. And I think we can be thankful for our food bank and for what it has been doing over the, over the past, a number of the years that I've been involved with it anyway.
Thank you for the great, but that's really good information to me.
So I can, I can probably put more of this, you know, you know, physical report in, in January with all of this Christmas stuff put in so that it can be put into officially.
So, um, Counselor Schramm, so you had 39 families. Is that up or down from last year?
That I don't have. We really tried to, um, what we've had problems in the past over the years is that sometimes, uh, people like to double dip a little bit. And so sometimes when we were delivering food hampers, uh, they would be someone else's, uh, kids from another community. And so it would be a little bit disheartening that you find people are going from community to community, getting food bank donations from all over. So we've really tried to make it very, and we're still adjusting. So I don't have those numbers for you, but it probably is a little bit down from last year only because we've tried to really concentrate on giving to the need that is here and not have a double dipping cost or situation.
Okay, thank you. Thanks very much. Counselor Filchuk?
I've got a few. Also appreciate Brian at, uh, at the Senior Center and always welcoming and so many people coming to talk to us and, and network with. So not just Brian, but. And a couple of things, the home builders update, I went to that. A little bit of a down market still. At one point that came across, 2019 was the toughest year in over 15 years for new home starts. And that's the Saskatoon Home Builders Association. All levels of government need to help people acquire affordable housing is one of the statements that they were trying to get across. There's a 20-page booklet that I expected that would be in tonight's package. It's not, but we'll make sure it's, it's public after. But I've also sent that out as a document to each one of you as an email right now. Uh, it does have a page on Mormon, page 16, and it's really about the availability of, uh, the housing. So we have, uh, we have lots available from 97,000 up to 116,000. Most are holding back on developing them and are ready to go if the need arises. So, uh, five, five points that sort of came across that they were really looking at, the home builders, better planning for ownership, affordability, zoning bylaw reviews, these are things that you'd expect them to come to us with and governments in general. Zoning bylaw reviews that are created in red tape. So red tape was a big thing and I'll talk a little more about that right away. Audit of development levies, we talked about development levies and they want to audit them and see exactly where all the money's going from the Home Builders Association. A goal to the national leader in permit, uh, uh, to be the national leader in permit processing. So they want to be the best in the country in national, in permit processing. And finally, their biggest one is lobbying about the PST on construction costs. And you heard so much about that. So in a lot of ways, a bit of a down with the people that were front were a bit of a, I, it's probably the first one where it really felt quite down. And, uh, not real optimistic yet, but they're ready to go if, if things change, change up. The other one I want to mention is the RCMP Advisory Committee was held on December 11th. And we, we meet with Martinsville and ourselves. And, and, uh, some of the things that we talked about, any of the concerns that came about, they talked about the feasibility. We spent a little bit of time about feasibility of a regional facility in the future. However, there need to be a lot of work performed from the RCMP perspective on how the cost of the new combined facility, our regional hub would save costs and enhance service. So we asked for really looking at more information to bring back, how would service get better if we had a regional hub? And specifically, what would the cost benefits be? So, but, you know, that, and again, it's very initial talks at that. Uh, it was determined that we should keep the item on the radar and meet in the near future, discuss the item again to keep, to keep it fresh. Uh, also as well, the Staff Sergeant, Sergeant Marquis advised us he'd be putting together his annual performance plan for 2020, which will set out the goals for the year. He hopes to have it ready for April 1st. What I would like each of council to do is send the city manager their top three goals they would like to see accomplished by the RCMP over the next year of Mormon. So we'll start with that and then he'll come back. We'll give it to, uh, our Sergeant Marquis. And then he will, uh, put it together as a report for Mormon and Martinsville and come up with sort of their five initiatives all the way through. And then the city manager will assemble the responses and provide the information. And we've already talked about that, that process. I think that was all I wanted to mention there. I can talk a little more about that report. And just again, uh, wishing everybody a great holiday season, Merry Christmas. And I guess it's a chance to sort of show our gratitude for all the things that we do have.
I just have a question of top three priorities. When would you like that to be managed?
I would like that tomorrow.
I knew you'd say that.
January 1st, three minutes.
Okay. Moving down to correspondence, we have a number of pieces of correspondence. We'll start with the Community Safety Net. Erin, you, Erin received this email and she also has talked with Ken Dick. So if anyone has any questions, Erin would be the one to ask them, ask your parents. So we do have a motion on here. I don't know if someone's prepared to make that motion. To start off, or do we want to talk about this program first?
Counselor?
Yeah, uh, you know, certainly, uh, you know, to this, um, you know, this year, I'm like, I didn't have a chance to actually go in and, and look at the Community Safety Net, you know, program. Let's say per se, um, obviously with this year, I'm like, I'm very happy that, you know, that a number of our local businesses, you know, kind of stepped up and are certainly playing a part in the program. I suppose for me, I'd like to know a little bit more about it, uh, you know, that could be located. Like I did go to the website, but there again, like from there, it did basically, you know, say to download the app kind of, whatever. Just wasn't, just wasn't there today. So I don't know, I'm like, for me, I would like to, you know, certainly understand the program a little bit better. Like if this could be, you know, you know, considered again, you know, at, at our next all committee meeting. I would certainly feel more comfortable with that, um, just, just to dot the i's and, and cross the t's on this.
I would agree too. I don't know, is anything else around the table heard? First I'll start with around the table. Has anyone around the table heard of this program before? Gary?
We've had it as part of the school. And again, it's a lot like our, uh, our community booklet where they reach out to businesses. Then they'll put a document together that a lot of times is available to the schools to use. So a lot of times it's focused on grade six, but I, I haven't read this specific document yet as this was an add-on here. So, uh, I, I haven't read this particular one. See what grade level they're looking at. They are age 10 to 13, which is similar.
Counselor Schramm?
It probably would be nice to have maybe Mr. Dick come to council and give us a presentation. Only because in reviewing the webs, web, website and material, a lot of the extra material links are US. And I, I guess I'm, I know it's Canada and the US, but I guess I'd like a little bit more clarity as to where, uh, you know, how that material, I would like it to be Canadian. So I, I know that, you know, probably our fire chief, maybe he has, is familiar with it. I don't know.
He's, he's put his hand up.
Oh, yeah. Your worship, yeah, I don't mean to drop. Um, just talking with Erin, I didn't realize that this is how this was going to play out. Humboldt uses this Community Safety Net. They're pretty big on it. It gives them, um, gives them some books and some different things that they can do on the public education side. They were, they referred to us or Humboldt referred them to us and, and the organizer from them contacted us saying, hey, is this something you want to run with? I told them that, um, we already have such amazing support from our businesses in the city of Mormon that I didn't want to hit them up with another ask because they're already so good for us. So we respectfully declined at that time. And it's kind of a surprise to me that, um, I thought that matter was finished. I didn't realize that they would send it on to Erin and bring it around to council this way, so.
Well, it looks like they did go to a lot of Mormon businesses already. I know I did ask Erin if this was a business, cause I, I couldn't, it couldn't seem to determine that. So I, I would agree with the comments already to maybe have Mr. Dick come to our meeting to explain exactly what the program is and, and his role in it and maybe get a little bit more information. I would think that would be the next logical step before we go ahead and support it.
But I do kind of wonder too if, because it feels a little bit like a bit of a donation request. If it's something that should be viewed in light of our donation policy.
But even so, I think we'd still need more information about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Your worship, I can tell you what Humboldt gets is they do the same thing. Humboldt Fire Department has given 350 of the booklets to give out at, at their tours or public education or anything like that. And for the ask and the cost, um, 300 booklets doesn't go very far when you get a thousand people at your open houses. So that's, that's kind of why I said no. And of course, it's totally up to council whether you want to, want to go down that road, but that's kind of where I was at.
Okay, now, did I see 200?
Oh, no.
No, okay.
And where it's gone with our school, when we had grade sixes, they were building was, it was done through the RCMP liaison that they were using this book at times. And, and again, that was the target group as the 10 to 13 instead of going anywhere else. But it was something that was there and.
Okay, so then do we agree that maybe we could get Mr. Dick to come? And we just ask Erin to contact him and make arrangements for that for the next committee of the whole? Okay. The next one is our FCM membership renewal. We have a motion on the books.
I just have a question with that. The little, um, little note from, um, about the travel fund. Has that changed from SUMA now? And, and then I guess my next question would be, what is the requirements for that travel fund? Your worship.
Well, um, the travel fund, if you have representation in your community, helps pay for a portion of their expenses. If you don't pay to the travel fund, then the municipality has to be 100% of the, of the expenses. So it's certainly helped us.
Right, I'm just, I'm just saying from my understanding, I thought it was, that SUMA was involved with that. Now that SUMA isn't, to me, I just kind of, I'm curious as to what that now, what the requirements are for that? And what, do we have to give into that? I, I guess I'm just, I just have a few questions.
For the SUMA, Andrew?
Yeah, so, um, I, I did reach out to, uh, cause honestly with this here, when, when I had seen the, like the handwritten note there, I, I, I did do a little bit further investigation. We actually had Brock, Brock, uh, Brock Carlton from, yeah, he's the CDO with, uh, with, with the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. He actually gave a present to us, a presentation to us back in March of this year. And with this year, FCM really wasn't collecting the, like the travel fund fees as a part of like the regular, um, like the regular renewal. So I was a little bit surprised when I seen this. I actually reached out to SUMA to, you know, to actually find out if things had changed, but just not communicated. Because there again, at our, at our board meeting two weeks ago, um, this year, it was basically identified that, um, that that travel fund, um, still was working independently. So, um, I, with this year, like I do have some irons in the fire in terms of figuring out whether or not that is, that is true to this point. So, you know, certainly with this year, like the notation there, um, so somebody that, you know, that our, you know, that our city manager, pardon me, that our city clerk did speak to, you know, basically confirmed, you know, said the information that, you know, you know, that it was included. However, I, I do think that that is actually second.
So if this is an error?
So I, I do truly think that our, that our city clerk was, was told this information. I just don't know that it's accurate and I, because, because it's different than, than what I'm hearing at the SUMA table. Regarding, regarding the actual fund that we have with this year, um, you know, that it, you know, so the travel fund is actually administered by SUMA. So how, how this was done before is FCM was basically collecting and holding that. And then with this year, uh, you know, basically, you know, turning that over to SUMA, you know, in terms of, um, in terms of authorizing those expenses. What has changed is that through the auditors' reports in the last couple of years, it was basically identified as something that, that the FCM shouldn't be doing in terms of, you know, let's say collecting money, but then remitting that to a different organization. So that's where there's been a little bit of confusion on this. And honestly with this, I think we're still working through it. So I could leave it.
Sorry, my question?
Sort of my question, my question about the travel fund is separate from my support of paying. I just want to make sure that I'm not, I'm not looking like I, I'm against this registration fee. Because it's awfully, it's, it's nicer than the one that's coming up next, so.
Well, this is due, this one to do, let's do the end of the year. I'm thinking that maybe we need to get some clarification on this before we pay, pay it.
It's not due till April 1st.
So could we get some clarification and maybe come to our next meeting? And find out just exactly what we're paying for? Okay, moving down to the next one. SUMA membership renewal and invoice. Do we have a motion there? Counsel Peterson.
I'd like to make the motion that the city of Mormon renews the SUMA membership for 2020 at a cost of $11,021.71.
Do we have a secondary for that? Counsel Philczuk, any questions? Hearing none, oh, sorry.
I guess I do. It says that, you know, not pay this by January the 31st. Means that termination of coverage for benefits. Is this, I guess, this is, this is dues, but how does it connect with? Why do they do that to hold us hostage for coverage of group of benefits? To me, it's kind of two different things. You, you pay and then you have benefits. Why they're connected?
I think, I think the reason it'd be connected is you can only get the SUMA benefits if you're a member. So they're just saying in order to keep your benefit back, you would have to be a member.
We have to pay by such and such a date. Any other comments here? Okay, all in favor? Okay, the next one. Crime Stoppers. We have a motion on the books. I can't remember if we have given to this one in the past.
I do have questions with this one too, only in the sense that how, how many times, there's no real, is this a yearly giving? Is this monthly?
We get this every year.
So it's only once a year?
Once a year we get this. And I just don't know if we have contributed to in the past because I'm thinking that we may not have. But I think we get this letter every year.
That's correct.
Yeah, so this year, honestly, like I don't know if we, if we have donated in the past. I did actually reach out today to actually see if there were any stats available to kind of support the, like the donation that is there. The, you know, certainly like the information behind the Crime Stoppers program, like there again, you know, like it's not terribly forthright. You know, in terms of, you know, because, because it's kind of, you know, it's like the whole program's kind of designed, let's say in secret, you know, and that kind of whatever. I, I can confirm that we are highly used jurisdiction. That's a role that I can throw there publicly.
Okay, so we have a motion on the books. Either someone makes that motion or we file it as correspondence. What's the wish?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll make the motion for the city of Mormon to support Crime Stoppers program with a donation of $200.
Do we have a secondary there? Counsel Beck? Any further questions? Okay, all in favor?
Sorry.
And a motion to file correspondence. Counsel Schramm?
I move that the following correspondence from the Community Safety Net, FCM Membership Renewal and Invoice, SUMA Membership Renewal and Invoice, Saskatchewan Public Safety Agency Letter, Crime Stoppers email, and the RCMP media release December 2nd to 9th, 2019, be received by council on Monday, December 16th, 2019, and are filed as read by someone.
Do we have a secondary? Counsel Jones? Anything further? All in favor? Good, thank you. Moving to other reports, we have in front of us the Recreation Advisory Board Minutes, November 27th, 2019, RCMP Advisory Board Minutes, and the stupidity reports for November 2019. Do we have a motion for these reports? To accept these reports? Counsel Philczuk?
I'll make the motion to accept the REC advisory board minutes, November 27th, 2019, the RCMP advisory board minutes, September 11th, 2019, and the stupidity report in, for November 2019 as read.
Do we have a secondary there? Counsel Tooney, is there any questions about any of these reports? Counsel Philczuk?
I just have one quick one on the REC one and it's something you can get back to if, it's the, it says remove the 30-day night stay. And then it says the campground is not designated to have seasonal, seasonal campgrounds open with the intentions. So is it to remove the 30 days? Like it's almost conflicting to me. One says remove the 30 days, but then it says that it wasn't meant to be seasonal. So I, I don't know what that means.
Okay, so right now there, there is, there are still a few complaints of people who, who wanted to stay there a little longer than 30 days. They would have to pull their trailer out and move to a different site. And so what was suggested was like we don't, didn't want to have seasonal sites where you just pull into a site and you're there for the whole season at a, at a reduced rate. But we, we thought that for one season, remove the 30-day maximum just to see what, well, how that impacts the park, whether it's, it gets used more because of that or whether if it, or because of it that it impacts people who want to come in for shorter stays for ball tournaments or things like that. So it's kind of like a one-year trial to see, to see where, where that plays out and how it affects the campground.
I support that one. It's not full right now, so that's good.
And then that's what, that was part of the discussion was that it wasn't as full as was anticipated.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Moving down to the accounts for approval, motion please. Counsel Tooney?
I'll make the motion to approve city accounts as presented by checks numbered 21-576 to 21-757 for the amounts of $1,252,447.68. And the payroll vouchers numbered 99-30 to 1-0-047 in the amounts of $192,392.62 for December 16th, 2019.
And do we have a secondary for that? Counsel Beck, any questions there? Okay, all in favor? And a motion to adjourn. Counsel Jones?
Make the motion to adjourn the Monday, December 16th, 2019, regular meeting of council.
Secondary, Counsel Tooney? All in favor? And I'd like to wish you all a very Merry Christmas, all the best in the year to our council, to our staff, and to everyone in the Mormon. Thank you.